Good evening. It's seven o'clock, January 5th, and this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission for Goochlin County. Ms. Parker, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious God, we come before you as your people and sheep of your pasture. We give you thanks and praise for all the blessings of this life, for life and liberty and family and prosperity. And we ask you to give us the guidance and the wisdom to act properly on behalf of the good citizens of Goochlin County. This we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, the minutes from last meeting. Any discussion, questions, motion?
Second.
Okay, proper motion and seconded in for approval of minutes for last meeting, December 1st. Now, open the room for citizen comment.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Open it up for a citizen comment. Anybody who has something they feel they need to say not about tonight's agenda. Thank you. Close the citizen comment. And Ms. Parker requests to defer. Anything?
We have no request to defer, additions, deletions, or changes to the order of the public hearings.
Thank you.
Our first public hearing item tonight is in District 4, CU 2022-15, application by Capital Broad LLC requesting a conditional use permit for unhosted short-term rental and public assembly place on 15.2 acres at 250 Broad Street Road on tax map 479050. The property is zoned agricultural limited A2. The conditional use permit is required by county zoning ordinance, Section 15112 in accordance with Sections 15285G and 15290. The comprehensive plan designates this area as rural enhancement area.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Tom Coleman, principal planner. As Ms. Parker said, this is a conditional use permit application. There are three elements to this CUP. One of them is a short-term rental, unhosted. One of them is a public assembly place, and the other is a waiver for a requirement for paved parking. Let me, side note, we did tweak the presentation a little bit. It won't be exactly the same format you've seen in the past. So certainly in the future, we can circle back with you if there's anything you feel is missing or anything you want added. We can discuss that. Again, back to the application. The subject property is zoned agriculturally. And the property immediately to the east and properties further to the east are zone R1 associated with Sycamore Creek subdivision. Most of the, the subject property and most of the surrounding properties are zoned agriculturally. The property is located in a rural enhancement area. One thing to note on this conference of plan map is the properties. This property actually abuts the Centerville, this Centerville Village, but it's not in the Centerville Village. So all of those properties that have a color designation of residential or park and recreation or color so forth, all to the east of this property are in the Centerville Village. Look at the air photo. You do see the, the Sycamore Creek subdivision and the golf course, which are to the east. And you see the subject property. There are trees on. It's not a heavily treated site, but there are mature trees on the property. And to the west, you see the Virginia Custom Home Builders facility. That is a commercial entity, but the proprietors live on the property, so there is a residence on that property also. And with that in mind, what we see sort of stage left titled conceptual plan, that's the conceptual plan that was submitted by the applicant. It does show the venue and tent area. Or let me, let me start by saying, it does show the house, the existing house and the garage. Those would be a short, associated with the short-term rental piece of this. They are showing a venue and tent area to the rear. That would be where the public assembly activities would take place. And they are proposing to have their parking areas to the front of that, to the Broad Street side of the buildings. Also to note, there is a 100-foot perimeter buffer that really lies adjacent to properties along eastern, western, and southern boundary along Broad Street. And you'll note to the north, the, the property is in the floodplain, which is a, there is floodplain associated with one branch of the Tucko Creek to the sort of forms the northern boundary of the property. And then moving to the adjacent slide, just provided some measurements to the closest dwellings to their proposed, you know, facility location, that venue tent area. To the west, it's about 350 feet away to the closest house. To north, northeast, it's about 530 feet, about 510 feet due east. So those, there are some dwellings, you know, in relative close proximity. We just want to provide some measurements on that. Just a summary of the application. They are not proposing any new buildings to be constructed. They would utilize the existing dwelling and garage for the short-term rental, unhosted. For the public assembly activity, those activities would take place in that designated area, as shown in the conceptual plan. And they would utilize tents to, to house or host the activities. They would focus on events that are limited to 80 to 100 people. Several of these items you'll see later on in the CUP conditions. Events would be, take place between 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM. I mentioned earlier, they do have that 100-foot perimeter buffer. They are proposing a parking lot of 25 people. And then they're requesting, as I mentioned earlier, a waiver that would allow them to not have to pave that. And they would be limited to one detached sign. Just a couple of pictures or elevations. The front elevation of the dwelling and the garage, again, those are for the short-term rental, unhosted. And then just what the, the entrance vista looks like, pretty much standing along Broad Street Road. There was a community meeting in November. There were eight attendees there. There were a number of concerns and topics that were discussed, including the, the types of events, the number of attendees, hours of operation, the safety and traffic of the traveling public along Broad Street, potential for noise, lighting, providing buffers, the site topography, especially as that relates to sort of the floodplain in the back, and the close proximity to the neighborhoods and the dwellings, the location and size of the event area and the parking areas. You know, the types of tents, the size of tents, and the duration of the tents were going to be up, and some, some other elements. You know, generally, while there were a number of concerns that were raised, the, the attendees generally did not express opposition or support for the application. And look at the CUP conditions. There are a number of CUP conditions over the next coming slides. The first group will apply to the both uses, the whole site. And then I'll get into some uses that will apply, really focus on the public assembly, and then conclude with some CUP conditions that apply to the short-term rental, unhosted. So the first one, there would be a maximum guest occupancy of 108 guests. They would be tied to the conceptual plan that I showed you earlier. They could not undertake any activities until a required POD or permit is approved. They would have to provide per turn, internal access to all the parking areas and facilities, and that would have to be approved by the community development and fire rescue. They would have to provide a lighting plan. Their amplified sound would be restricted in a similar manner that other comparable uses are restricted. They're generally prohibited from having amplified sound outdoors, except the specific carve-out for weddings and wedding recessinals, processionals. Generally, any amplified sound would have to be in some type of enclosure, and that could include a tent with flaps or something like that. And then no amplified music after 10:00 PM. They would be required to submit a landscape plan. That would maintain the plantings within that 100-foot buffer. They would have to replace any trees that are removed. And also, I'll direct you to number C right there. There are trees, but it's not a densely treated site. So any areas where trees are like more than 100 feet apart, you know, we would do the landscape plan, require them to plant things to try to beef up that buffer. Fireworks would be prohibited. No hunting or discharge of firearms. They would be allowed to have a one detached sign. No RVs, tents, or camping would be allowed on-site. And expiration date of February of 2028. That's what's consistent with our recommendation for a five-year approval if the application is approved. And then the standard condition to notify the county and the prospective purchaser if the property is sold, and to provide that documentation to staff. Okay, that's the overall. Now moving to conditions, CUP conditions that really apply mostly or essentially to the public assembly place. That first one says that those, the, the public assembly activities would take place in that designated area on the conceptual plan. They could have a maximum of 100 guests present at a public assembly activity. They would be limited to one per day. There is a little bit of a carve-out or something like a wedding that has like rehearsal dinner. They could have two, but they have to be related events. Again, the hours of operation are limited. They would have to get an ABC license if that's required. The minimum of 25 parking spaces, including the waiver for the non-handicap parking. The waiver would not apply to handicap spaces. Those have to be paved. And then just, we're not overly concerned about the potential for parking on Broad Street Road. If it does happen, we would have the right to come back and tell them they have to put no parking signs there. And then the sort of standard condition to notify the zoning administrator annually and to update the zoning administrator of planned activities. Now, as the conditions apply to the short-term rental, unhosted, this, the septic capacity here is limited to eight. And they could, now with the condition, there, there is an ultimate limit of 10. It's eight as presented. If they were to expand their septic capacity, they could increase it by two to 10. So they do have that allowance. The carbon monoxide and smoke detectors are required. The structures would have to maintain their residential appearance. They would have to post no trespassing signs around the perimeter of the property. And then all guests would have to be notified in writing of selected conditions, including the occupancy limit, no amplified sound outdoors, and no amplified sound after 10:00 PM, observing the no trespassing signs, and no hunting or discharging of firearms on the property. And that concludes the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
The tents, are they, I would imagine they're, they're going to be erected for the season. They don't get, come up and down, right, or?
They, it can be done either way. We've seen it done either way. How the building official treats it differently. Some tents permit it to stay up a longer amount of time. Some can go up and down. This doesn't dictate which one they do. As it stands right now, they could do either way.
Thank you. Anybody else? Would the applicant like to speak?
Yes.
Please come up. Tell us who you are and your address.
Good evening, Chairman and Planning Commission. Happy New Year. My name is Pratyusha. Go ahead, sorry.
It's okay. And your address?
I live in 12021 Amberwood Lane, Glen Allen, Virginia. My name is Pratyusha Jakum, and I go by Pratt. And I moved to the United States. I'm a first-generation immigrant from India. I moved to the United States when I was 21 years old. I went to University of Illinois as a graduate student and moved to Richmond in 2003. And I've been living here since 20 years with this gentleman that I've married for 24 years. And I have two sons who go to Richmond City Public Schools as, as well as Henrico County. We bought this property right before the lockdown. We just loved the way it is situated, situated close to West End and with Broad Street frontage in line by the Sycamore Golf Course. We thought that it would be a beautiful place for events and weddings and celebrations because of, because of the landscaping. But with the lockdown, we couldn't proceed with our plans. So we rented it out as a residence, and right now, a family is, has been living there. With the lockdown over or with pandemic behind us, we would like to go back to our plans. However, with the recession expected, we would want to start small, and we wanted to see how the market reacts and then go from there. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you going to register as an AIB and B or something like that?
Not yet, but we have been waiting for the permits. And once it's approved, we can do it. We have done it on a trial basis, and it is not complex.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, open it up to public hearing. Anybody would like to come forth and?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate you providing the time for us to come up and talk and for going through this process and getting community input.
Tell us who you are and where you live.
I am Greg Calizzi. I live a Seven Iron East of that location. I have the house right at the end of the 510 foot marker.
Can you provide your address?
2028 Sycamore Creek Drive, Manneken Savit. Mike, do you want to tag team this?
Mike Luskum. I live directly east, 220 Broad Street Road.
He's the one at the end of the 530 arrow.
Okay.
So we're both in close proximity to this location.
Got it.
So we want to first thank Mr. Coleman for the notes that were captured from the last discussion. We covered a wide variety of, of topics. What we're going to do is provide a little more color behind some of those, those topics. Two of the topics actually in that discussion that were hit in great detail. One was around noise. And then a couple days after that meeting, there was, I don't know if it was a band or amplified music coming from the property that played very loud late into the evening. We could hear it inside our house with all the doors and windows closed till after 11:00 o'clock. The noise in that little valley really carries. We can also hear the noise coming from Sports Page and Sunset Grill. Just to give you a sense for how much noise travels in that area, Sunset Grill and Sports Page are intent facilities, very similar to what they're proposing out there, yet those are a mile from our location. So 170 yards versus a mile. And looking at the, the requests, I mean, our, our recommendation would be that you take a look at it as two separate proposals. The conditional use permit for the property as well as the individual stay. And then we're going to touch on a few more topics that get into a little more detail from some of the issues that we had concerns on. One, just more broadly, we've been participating in some of the county's presentations on the long-term plan that was referenced earlier, as well as the work around the villages. And as Mr. Coleman mentioned, this property does fall outside of the village boundary, the new village boundary that was presented as part of the strategy. So we're not sure how this is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan and the village to confine development and businesses within the village and prevent sprawl across the, the rest of the county. So for that reason, I mean, our, our position would be, it doesn't make sense given the strategy behind those two plans. Getting into some of the details, if you decide to move forward on this, the hours of operation currently listed at eight to 10, seven days a week throughout the entire year. And as mentioned, potentially two events a day depending on what the vents are. That's a lot of events that go pretty late into the evening. So the hours of operation were a major concern for us. Recommendation would be that there's restrictions on the number of events per week to help mitigate noise and disruption to the neighboring properties to maybe a couple days a week, two or three events a week. And that the, the hours of operation are adjusted. If it's going to be eight to 10, that also, that time includes setup and breakdown, teardown, and, and the people leaving the property. Rather than music and activities going to 10:00 o'clock, maybe take them to 9:00 o'clock and give them an hour or two to do the cleanup, teardown, and, and get off the property.
Yeah, I agree with, and apologies, Greg and I didn't have a lot of time to coordinate, but you're going to hear very similar themes, right? And I think just generally speaking, the Airbnb, the short-term unhosted rental property, the house, we don't have a lot of problem with that. It's the event space that's, that's the major concern. And I think you can see three of us right there that are in direct line of sight. Ask yourselves if, if you want to be living in one of our houses and, and looking at a permanent event space out your window, right? So that's a situation. We respect the, the intent of an investment property and so forth, but it's, it's being inserted in what is a very peaceful residential area today. Thank you. You had three minutes. Your three minutes are up?
Okay. We were under the impression if we're, we're representing the Sycamore Creek community.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Because we talked to a number of our neighbors that couldn't be here tonight.
They have, they have to have signatures. I'm sorry.
We have to have signatures? Okay, do we get six, can he come back up for three minutes then?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So I gave you a handout. I don't need to read it to you. We've already talked about number one, number two, structures. This is a real hot button for me. That's a direct line of sight to my house. If there are to-be structures, first recommendation would be a pavilion park-like structure. A fallback for, from that is temporary tents that would go up and down with each event, right? The thing we definitely don't want is a tent put up and porta-potties and dumpsters and whatever just left out there. That is absolutely unacceptable. Staffing, we feel that this should be a staff site, possibly security present because alcohol will be served. Traffic, 100, 100 people, you're probably talking 50 to 75 cars. I pull out and in and out of there every day, and it's dangerous, right? It's, it's definitely needs a close look. Scheduling, Greg already touched on this. We're in line on that. And lighting and sound, we're in line there too. Just, just basically cut everything off by 9:00 PM and clear the property by 10:00 PM is what we'd be looking for. And really no amplified sound. I mean, unamplified sound will carry hugely out there. So amplified sound will really be a nuisance for the adjacent property owners. So, oh, the last point is the term. We'd like to see a one-year term and reevaluate the effect on the surrounding property owners rather than the, I think the typical term is five years on these. So that's what we'd be looking for. Again, ask yourself if you want that put in line of sight to your house. And again, we respect the, the initiative to develop business, but it's a, just a little bit of an unusual spot. The Airbnb, fine, no problem. It's the event space. That's the big concern. Thank you very much. Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak again? Is, is there anybody else that needs to speak?
Thank you, neighbors. Appreciate the concerns and appreciate the support on small business. I would like to say, and those are great concerns, and I would also like to ask you to put yourself in an investment shoes. If it's a limited time of one year, investing on that property to develop the place in parking spots and all that stuff would probably be not effective for the cost that I put in. And additionally, 9:00 PM time and limiting the events to one or two or three days is probably not going to get us the benefit for the cost that we put in there. We have to be flexible enough for the events to take place. And I'm not expecting that the whole week would be filled. But then there might be, you know, a few days that, you know, that they might want to, it might be a middle of the week or weekend, or we don't know. We would like that flexibility to be open for all seven days so that there is some flexibility for the people that want to rent it, if that makes sense.
With the tents you would be using, would they be permanent structures? Or would they be taken up and put down, up? Would they be assembled by UO or by the person that was putting on the event? How would that be handled?
We would like to have one person on site. And if the party or if the, whoever hires it needs a tent based on their event type, then we would put it. If they just want to host it without a tent, then we would, probably there is no need to put it in there. And I'm thinking that if there are events lined up every day for two or three days, then I don't know if it makes sense to tear it down every time and then bring it back.
But you don't see yourself putting up a permanent structure? At this point, you're, you would be using just tents that, that, yeah, I understand. If you had three events in a row, three days in a row, you would put a tent up and leave it up. But then it would not stay up for, for weeks on end.
At this point, I do not expect that. But again, I'll have to see how the demand is and how people want to have it and where the demand is for the rental.
And also, after an event, I, I would think that they wouldn't come at 9:00 o'clock at night and tear it down and take it away. It'd probably be the next day if you didn't have another event?
I would agree with that. And I also wanted to add that 9:00 PM might be a bit too early to close an event. You know, people usually come in the evenings or six and seven. They should at least have a few hours to spend and socialize and have food and drinks. So I would expect it to be until 10:00 PM. But I respect the privacy, and I know that Mr. Luskum's home is beautifully situated in a unique place. And I do not believe he would have a sight of all this from his window. And I've never been on his property, but I will not be able to see his property until I go towards the very end of the property. So I'm assuming that it, it won't be the same sight. So I do respect the privacy and the quietness of the neighborhood. But at the same time, as a business owner, I should be flexible for folks to rent this place to celebrate their events.
Subject of porta-potties. An event for Friday night, and then you don't have an event for Sunday. Do you leave the porta-potties up for the whole weekend? Or do you have someone take them away, then bring them back?
I would look for county's guidance on how to maintain that. I have not really dealt with porta-potties before, but I would do what's best for the community.
Well, I think you would have to have them, right?
I, I guess. I do plan on having them, but on the maintaining side, I guess I have to go, go with the recommendation.
Just wondering if they're like semi-permanent. If you're having multiple events per week, it seems like it would cost a lot to have them taken out and brought back the next day or two. So it almost sounds like they'll be there in perpetuity.
I, I would like to look into it in detail. Unfortunately, I do not have enough information on that yet.
Okay.
Actley Johns are rented by the day. Mo Johns does it all of the time, so they run them by the day, and I don't think anybody is really going to be willing to pay a daily, a daily rental and leave it up months at a time.
Okay.
May I ask a question? What's your experience with hosting events?
Good question. I did help a friend set up in Texas. It's running and operational. I personally have not run a business before, but I've helped people develop this. Does it help?
Good.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Anybody else care to speak? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
I have some questions for Tom. We normally limit the number of events per week? We don't, do we?
It's handled different ways. This is limited to one per day, which is sort of a standard starting point. There are some like Bandits Ridge, for example, the limits were removed, you know, eventually there. There are some that are restricted to so many days per week. So they're they're handled different ways, but the starting point is you, this is consistent with where we usually start, which is about one per day.
Having one per day is what we normally do to start with?
I would say the majority are handled that way.
Tom, oh, sorry.
I don't think I've seen where we've limited a CUP to one year before.
To?
Limiting a CUP to one year where this is set up at a five, and that's not something we've, I've done.
No, ultimately, the board can set that date. You know, our starting point is five. The famous one or the was Bandits Ridge when they originally came forward, they were given a nine-month approval. So they had to come back and then and get a five-month approval. Typically, I mean, that has been discussed, but the vast majority of times when it is approved, they do provide a five-year approval.
Bandits Ridge was done that way?
Because there was a lot of opposition and they had committed to building a pretty substantial investment in building a permanent structure on the site. And so the board gave them nine months to allow them to build that building, work through a season, and then come back and reapply. And when they, you know, and essentially, the first, you know, there was probably 30 plus or minus people that spoke in opposition to it the first time. And the second time, as I recall, there's about two people that spoke in opposition to it. So I think in that situation, they demonstrated that they didn't disturb the community, and so they they were given an initial five years with that second approval.
So with a five-year, despite it being a five-year, staff will follow these events and work with the applicant year by year, right?
Yeah, well, the, if CP is approved, they still will have to go through some site planning and permitting processes. They're not proposing structures so that facilitates it, but if they're going to do any grading, they're going to have to make improvements, they're going to install a parking area, they're going to have to make improvements to their drive aisle. So they are going to have to get some additional plans approved before they can start operation.
Right.
But, you know, that eats into their five years because the five years starts when the board approves the application.
But I think there was something in the notes that you have to be aware of the events, your scheduling or?
Yeah, we require them to annually submit a report. Again, this is a standard condition. They have to submit an annual report to zoning administrator of what their schedule is for the year and then update that as events are scheduled or subtracted. So, you know, we're typically getting updates maybe every other month from, based on, especially events being added.
Yeah, so we're keeping an eye on the thing, not just throwing it out there.
Right.
Is this size lot consistent with other places?
I'm sorry.
Is this size property consistent with other places we've done?
Oh, that is a good question. I mean, let me think.
What is the acreage?
15 acres. You know, these are always in an agricultural district. I would say this is probably to the small size, but most of them are like 20 to something. They're not a lot larger than this, but 15 acres is probably to the small side.
This is a question for Tom and maybe Kelly. This is a, it's a two-part CUP. One is a public assembly and one is a short-term rental. And I'm assuming you can't split it. You can't vote for the assembly and not vote for the other part afterwards, all or nothing?
Well, you can, you propose amendments and maybe you would strike the public assembly. So we like to have everything that's a property owner's allowed to do on one document. So even when someone comes in for a second use, we write everything on one document. So you don't have to go find the old one and have conflicting restrictions. So if you didn't want to support the public assembly and you wanted to support the short-term rental, you would, you know, strike the paragraphs, you know, it's kind of lined out which paragraphs are for which, so.
It could be separated.
Kelly, is it actually say with their motion, they would say?
Yeah, with your motion, yeah.
We recommend approval of this use, and I guess they could say we don't approve this use for clarity, but.
Right, and then we would just update the resolution to remove the parts, you know, for your recommendation.
I don't really have any problem with the short-term rental, but the assembly, you know, the distance is there. I mean, I played at a golf course in that little par three right there. You know, 500 feet is not very far. With three wood, but you can, I sympathize with them for the sound. I think the sound could be, you know, a real issue because it's a narrow lot, you can't, it's got the acreage, but it's a, it's a long skinny acreage, not a broad acreage. Not too, not too excited about the assembly portion.
I would agree with Mr. Rocket Charlie, if you're complete, Mr. Rocket Charlie. I think that the Airbnb makes sense. I think that the the public assembly portion of the CUP, I think the applicant maybe could have some more due diligence on the specifics of the events. Having it open seven days a week, 14 hours a day to start in that small of a lot, it seems to be a little bit much. So I, that's, I feel the same way, Mr. Rocket Charlie.
I tend to support these types of events because, first of all, I like the idea of people being able to do with their property as they please, as long as it meets the, meets the laws and the rules and not disturb their neighbors. I think that the neighbors do have some legitimate concerns as far as the noise concern, but you know what? If they hear this music in their house, they probably going to call the, call the police and report it as a nuisance every time it so happens. Everybody thought that that was going to happen on, with Bandits Ridge, and we've had very, very few complaints about Bandits Ridge. That's the reason we renewed the CUP. I think the, I think the applicant being aware that their neighbors in, when that closed parks submitted, but certainly close enough to hear loud music, I think the applicants would be very, very careful about, you know, allowing their guests to make a lot of noise.
The only way to, to really be sure of that is to do a shorter term and say, you know, let's just do it on a trial basis like we did with Bandits Ridge. And, you know, if it's tents and things like that, we're not talking about, Bandits Ridge had the significant investment of building a building and then maybe not being able to use it after nine months. If we're not talking about building a building.
Yeah, there's no capital outlay for renting tents for affordable toilets, yeah.
Capital outlay for the, for the parking, you know, but it might make more sense to to limit it that way so that they, they can prove they're going to do a good job.
Limit it by events per month or?
The amount of the CUP, the time, so that, because it's, it's not likely they're going to book this place seven days a week. Even five years down the road, they probably not going to have it booked seven days a week.
It's real unlikely.
Even if you all book every weekend.
I think in, if it, if the CUP is adjusted, it needs to be stated because intent is one thing, how it's written, I would say is another. I would say if you, you know, if you said it would be four a week instead of, you know, seven days a week, it's four events a week. What is Bandits Ridge? What do they have? They have seven days a week? Bandits Ridge? Sorry, Mr. Coleman.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
How many events may Bandit, since we're talking about Bandits Ridge?
You know, don't recall what the original application was. They came in for their, actually first, and then their second renewal. They were unlimited after their second renewal.
And absolutely no complaints?
Right, and that's a unique site because it becomes sort of a community center for that part of the county, so they.
So do we need to make a motion that says we're, we are happy with the short-term rental, then we are limiting the CUP like that?
Yeah, whatever, whatever you'd like your motion to be, we can work through some of the conditions. We can do, condition 12 is the expiration for the, for all events. We can separate that if you guys want to do a shorter term for the public assembly and leave the five years for the, for the short-term rental, we could do that. Or if you, if you want to do it all together, and then if your number 17 is a daily event limit, if you want to change that to a weekly or a monthly or have some ideas there, you know, that's, that's a condition that we could work with too, if you, if you want to mess with that one. Just make it in your motion and we'll come up with what's passed. We'll make sure it gets written.
Frankly, I don't like the idea of separating it. I really don't.
I kind of agree with Mr. Duke. I think that one year on the public assembly would give everyone a chance to see how it works. And even the short, you make it one year for the whole CUP, and then after one year, if it works fine, then we can extend the whole thing again, but to separate it into two pieces. That makes sense enough, but I do think.
I agree, I would agree to that, Tom.
Okay.
Really hamstringing their, we're really tying their hands on what they can do with the business. So I mean, if we're limiting, you know, I don't want to, I don't, I can't see limiting the days that they can do.
No, me neither.
We're starting a business, we can't. So I think we're getting too far into running their business.
Right.
I think so too.
I'll make a motion that we approve the short-term rental as a five-year CUP and the, the meeting, the, what is it, public meetings? Public place of public assembly for a one-year term.
And then review.
And then review with, with no limits on the days. I don't.
I don't think we can do this.
If we can do it, I, okay, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion with an amendment and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we get a roll call vote just for clarity? Mr. Duke?
Aye.
Mr. Rocket Charlie?
Aye.
Mr. Patack?
Aye.
Mr. Myers?
Aye.
Mr. Brewer?
Aye.
The motion to recommend approval as amended passes on a 5-0 vote. This case will be heard before the Board of Supervisors on February 7th, 2023, with the recommendation of approval as amended from the Planning Commission. Our next public hearing item tonight is countywide DOA 2022-6, Amendment to Zoning Ordinance Section 1556, Pre-Applications and Applications to Revise the Community Meeting Requirement.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Crystal Onidas, Deputy County Administrator. My first time presenting before you all, so please be kind. Here before you all tonight for review and consideration, you have a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance that centers around the community meeting requirement. And I'll just go through a little background and premise behind it. Currently, right now, what we have is an issue where we have a abundance of community meetings that oftentimes do not have a lot of attendance. We do see value and meaning in having them, especially for certain types of conditional use permits, rezonings, certain items. One thing we're trying to be mindful of too is staff capacity and time. These meetings typically take place in the evening. A lot of coordination time and effort goes into them. We typically always have a staff member there. We always encourage folks to have a community meeting, but we're trying to move, instead of having something required in county code, to actually make something an administrative policy, meaning at the staff level, we'll have an operational policy as to what certain things will trigger a community meeting based on, if it's a rezoning other than downsizing a lot, for example, if it's a CUP renewal that had violations. So that being said, we're trying to make it an administrative process rather than a profunctory abundance of community meetings that oftentimes are held with very little attendance. But we do recognize there is value in it. There's value in having staff out there hearing from folks, especially on specific matters. But as the code reads now, we do have quite a few meetings just to have them. If you have any questions, happy to answer them, but again, our recommendation is that we remove the mandatory meeting requirement and create a administrative policy for that.
What do other jurisdictions do, like Henrico or Justice?
That is a great question. I am going to call a friend.
I apologize.
Mr. Coleman, the question was, what do other jurisdictions do with regards to a community meeting policy?
I think that they, it's different. I don't think most locales have the mandatory. I think there's a little bit of subjectivity in how they do their community meetings.
Because I don't, I know they advertise them usually, but I don't want to see Henrico having very many community meetings.
Especially things like renewals where there's no opposition, where there's no violations. You know, those, that's something we've been talking about for a while, those types of things, because of the, it's the burden just to the community to be, to not be obligated, but to encourage to show up to this, so.
You would still have the length, same length of time between application and us?
We're still going to have pre-application. So they still have to go through their pre-application. We're still meeting with all the agencies. It's just the community meeting part of it that's under the ordinance.
You'd like to reduce that? Two people show up and it takes 10 minutes and yet there was staff time and that makes sense.
In doing it administratively, is not going to give an air of preference to certain cases?
No, sir. So I actually have a copy of the proposed policy that we've been working on internally. And so it outlines questions that staff should keep in mind when they review an application. So there's several factors. Compliance with comprehensive plan, level of traffic impact, access management compliance, compatibility with the surrounding area, water and wastewater usage, potential negative impact to long-term property value, exceptions to ordinance standards. And it is that regardless of any of the above findings, a community meeting for those factors, it must be held for rezoning other than downsizing, conditional uses in a residential or agricultural district for non-residential use, amendment to a conditional use that minimizes buffers, expands the use by more than 25%, a major change to a conceptual plan, or increased intensity of use that may create compatibility or mitigation concerns. Request of a Board of Supervisor member or a Planning Commissioner. So if you all know something's coming up and feel that, you know, a community meeting would be worthwhile, we can obviously do it at that point too. Or for CUP renewals, as I mentioned, with a history of conditional use permit violations. So we've outlined some pretty good criteria, and the idea is trying to target the more visible conditional use permits, the things that folks are definitely going to notice. It's not saying that we still wouldn't go through putting notices in the paper for any and all conditional use permits. It's just what are we actually dedicating the community resources and staff resources to, to trying to? to trying to conduct the community meetings?
And gentlemen, you do have a copy of that policy on the dais.
Would you still send out a notice to quote adjoining property owners of cases coming up?
Yes, sir. That is standard procedure, so we would continue with that, with rezonings and conditional use permits in that general vicinity of all adjacent owners.
And that would stipulate that there will not be a community meeting unless enough of the community asks for one.
We haven't worked through that detail yet, but it always does stipulate who the applicant is, who a point of contact is, and that they can contact the Department of Community Development for questions.
The only thing is, at one time, I didn't, because I went to law. And then I went and actually looked at the properties. But in some cases, the first time that the surrounding neighbors would know any of the details of the project would be at the public hearing, if you don't have the community meeting. So I think, you know, unfortunately, some people use the community meetings like a public hearing and voice all of their complaints right there, which is not the proper time. But I think the community, I mean, I don't, I think often they deal really good.
I would agree with you, sir. I'm also trying to be very realistic with the bandwidth and capacity of staff and our ability to produce on a day-to-day basis, let alone the special projects that we have and the numerous evening meetings, as well as the fact that we also have EnterGov, our digital permitting software, that does have a record of all of the rezoning applications, conditional use permits, anything that is going through the Department of Community Development. They have a record of that where you can actually see it on the public side. Now, I recognize not everyone uses a computer, but it also is at times as simple as if you notice something going on in your neighborhood, you can call the Department of Community Development and ask like, hey, I noticed there's someone building something. Do you know anything about this?
Well, the thing is, people probably are not going to take the initiative to come in and look up. Since you have to send out the notice anyway to all the surrounding counties, why don't, when you send out the notice, instead of requiring the community meeting, why don't you include with the notice that something is going to happen, a more detailed description of what the applicant plans to do?
I think that we can do that as long as we're staying within what we currently send out. We're also very mindful of what our mailing budget is in community development. Out of any county agency spends the most on postage and mailings and printing materials. And I'm not trying to sound negative, but if we can work in something that still fits on the form that we're using now and maybe revamp that where it's a little more informative of this is actually what's coming in next door, being proposed next door, happy to do that.
I mean, I think you could probably do it in a paragraph, like a manuscript. But, you know, just a few words to say more than your neighbor's planning to do something next door to you. You know, something just a little more descriptive than that.
Agreed, and there's also standard pro forma legal language that we have to include in those notices. But we can work on providing some kind of cursory context to it and at least encouraging someone, if they have a question, to contact the county.
You still have the signs that you put up for?
Yes, sir. Those signs do go up, and it's important to note that that is not a code requirement. That is a courtesy that we do as a county.
The signs going up is not a code requirement?
No.
But the adjacent property owner letters and the legal notices are?
Those are. Yes, we went through that with a recent other CUP for HG Meets. There were some questions about the signs and was that code compliant for notice? But, so the posting of the property is not a code requirement. The notices in your local media of record and within your adjacent properties, mailings going out, that is required.
I think we can help be more efficient.
I mean, I've been to community meetings where it's been me, applicant, and one person from the state.
Me too, me too. So if we can do away with those and make it more efficient, it's, all right? Yeah.
There you go. I will also note that there's the opportunity, as I mentioned, that Planning Commissioners and Board of Supervisors can request a community meeting for any application.
Okay. Thank you. Open it up to a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak about the ordinance? Okay, close the public hearing. Gentlemen?
I move we accept it as presented.
I second it.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion to recommend approval passes on a five-o vote. This case will be heard before the Board of Supervisors on February seventh, 2023, with the recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. Our final public hearing item tonight is Countywide DOA 2022-7, Subdivision Ordinance Amendment, repealing Article 10 Access Management in its entirety. This section has been moved to Article 23 of the zoning ordinance.
Good evening. You all have before you another ordinance amendment for consideration. This relates to access management. Essentially, what this is, is a housekeeping item. The proposed ordinance amendment, when we went through our zoning update, we realized we had duplicative language within the subdivision ordinance and in zoning. So we're proposing we just strike it within the subdivision ordinance, and we will work through the subdivision ordinance. As I know, you all know, we've been working on trying to do a rewrite and initiate that, but that will be something we're working on as an iterative process. But at this time, we're just trying to clean it up so it's not confusing when people come in for applications and where are they referencing when they're talking about access management? Because the same language is in two places.
Thank you. Open it up for a public hearing. Nobody speak. We'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve as presented.
I second it.
Good motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion to recommend approval passes on a five-o vote. This case will be heard before the Board of Supervisors, February seventh, 2023, with the recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission.
Ms. Parker, old business.
No old business, but we do have one item of other business.
Yes, ma'am.
Establishment of the Nominating Committee. The nominating committee is a two-person committee, which will nominate chair and vice chair for the April meeting where the chair and vice chair will officially be elected.
Mr. Chairman, the nominating committee will be Mr. Duke and Mr. Myers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.